We're good to go.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this, uh, work-study session of Independent School District 624. Uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mullen.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Arcand.
Here.
Bloyd.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Allison, here.
All right. Um, I know that there is a, uh, a, a link to be able to stream these live. I, I believe it's still up on the, uh, P, uh, stream. Um, and we will now move into our first discussion item, uh, B1, which is the, uh, career pathways. Dr. Kazmercheck, is this going to you?
Uh, Dr. Gillespie will kick this one out.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Gillespie.
Thank you. Chair Mullen, members of the board, I will introduce Jenny Moore to you, our Career Pathways Coordinator. She's going to share some exciting updates to our Career Pathways program. Um, Jenny, as you know, her leadership is significant as she works with the team of our educators as we look towards the future. Um, an excitement around what our Career Pathways is doing now to support our students, but also what can become in our, our new high school. Um, and so Jenny, I'll pass this to you.
Thanks, Dr. Gillespie. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, so I think, Steve, are you my person to switch the slides? So there you go, okay. Well, good evening, I'm so happy to see everyone, Chair Mullen and members of the board. It's so great to, to see everyone virtually at least. Thank you for your space and time for me to share some really great, exciting things with Career Pathways. The slideshow that Marissa sent out, all of those are live links. So the one link that you see in front of you right now is a video that is a narration of what I'm going to share with you today. So if you want to share with your students, maybe your own children, anyone else, uh, you're welcome to watch that. It's about three minutes and forty seconds. Before I go into any more detail, what I wanted you all to know is that what I share with you in the next couple of minutes is a true piece of collaboration within our district. And as of the beginning of this school year, as of today, um, Career Pathways, the team, myself and Mr. McGarthway, Michael McGarthway, we have interviewed, gosh, I think we've done over seventy individual feedback sessions with staff members. And so as we continue to, um, interview our people, our staff members and students as well, we continue to edit and evolve. And so what I'm sharing with you today then is the true, um, result of everyone else. So, um, Steve, you can go to the next slide there. We at White Bear Lake Area High School, as you all know, that all of our students at the very bottom, this is kind of a step ladder that we have had for our students right now. Um, we have, all high school students are assigned a specific school counselor and all of our high school students have access to some sort of college and career center or college and career opportunity. And so in Career Pathways, if you take that next step up, what you see and what all of you know is that students can take a variety of career pathway courses. And in that previous slide and what you'll see in the, in the following slides as well are those icons that if they are next to a specific course in a registration guide, they are officially considered career pathway courses. And during this stage, we know that students are learning and exploring these opportunities. They may not have, they may not quite have, um, dedicated or committed themselves to a specific career, but they're really in those stages of learning and exploring. Any student who takes a career pathway course, their name is taken off the roster and they're added to an email list. But here was what was brand new and here's what we were kind of in a pickle, was that we needed as Career Pathways to say, how do we differentiate between two types of students? Here's an example. If I'm a student and I'm an Allison, I'm going to use you because you're the last person who talks. So let's say Allison and I are best friends, right? We're best friends, we're going to take intro to healthcare careers together, okay? So I might be taking intro to healthcare careers because I've seen Grey's Anatomy and I kind of want to learn a little bit more about what healthcare careers is all about. But Allison, on the other hand, is all it. She's going to take every healthcare career pathway class that she can. She knows she's going to go into healthcare after she's done. So we wanted to differentiate between the two types of students. And that is where this is our newest piece that we're adding. So brand new to all students, um, is that students that are in tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grade in high school can register for a specific career pathway. And Steve, if you go to the next slide, I can elaborate a little bit more. That link right there is for all of you is the live, um, online registration guide. If you know Lindsay Glamers or Tanya Giesi, they completely restructured the whole thing, it looks fabulous. So for any students that will be in tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grade next year, they are eligible to register for a pathway. And all this information can be found on page eight of the registration guide. Um, but here's what's super cool, if you go to the next slide, Steve. When you register for a pathway, the pathway actually appears in a student's school schedule. But what's really cool is it does not replace an elective course. And based on student and staff feedback, what we found was that we have a variety of different students committed to certain career pathways. Instead of replacing or acting as an elective course, what it does is it appears on a school schedule and it is a signal to the students' community of support saying that Allison is going to be in the Health and Wellness Career Pathway, her junior year of high school, and she can still take a bunch of elective courses as, um, as she's interested in. Another reason why we did this was that we know students may need to be going into a more selective school. They may need to have that foreign language. Or maybe I'm a student who really wants to take band world language inquire. Maybe I want to be the percussionist that you were all talking about. So we want to honor the fact that students can have their cake and eat it too, okay? So you may have a student who takes every automotive career pathway course, for example, and register for the pathway. Or you may be having a student that's still learning and exploring. Or you may have a student who takes their highest level AP courses and high science courses, and then they can still register for a specific pathway. Um, let's see here. When students register, and that link brings you right to the website, uh, our Career Pathways website that I update on a regular basis. But there are specific benefits to registering for a career pathway. Besides receiving relevant coursework, college credit opportunities, and a variety of industry-recognized credentials, students who are officially registered in that pathway get the first dibs on paid internships, job shadows, job site tours. Brand new then, we are going to be offering some exclusive workshops for our registered pathway participants. That could be employability skills, nailing an interview, building your resume, cover letter, um, some really important things that we received from feedback from our industry partners. We also help students that are registered, um, find relevant jobs. We have created some tuition reimbursement and scholarship opportunities that are unique to Career Pathway participants. And we are going to, brand new, starting next year, any student who's registered and graduate, we're actually going to track them through an alumni support system, something that we have not done yet. And, um, I very informally just collected their personal email. But what we're seeing is that if we're going to put all this work into investing in our students, we want them to tell the story to their other, um, White Bear Lake High School students. Um, let me see if I got everything. So that is all of it in a nutshell of the newest piece of what we are doing to Career Pathways. I'm going to stop right there for one second, um, before I, uh, share with you some other things that are worth noting. But does anyone have any specific questions about the newest addition to registering for a pathway as a placeholder, um, in a student's high school experience?
Questions, comments? All right, Jenny, I, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm impressed, great work, and I'm, I'm really excited. I know Dr. Arcand just raised his hand, so, uh, Dr. Arcand?
Yeah, the, the question I have is, one of the goals, I know we develop pathways to, to, to allow students to determine, uh, whether they want to continue that pathway or whether they decide there's a different pathway. How easy is them to transfer to a different pathway if they decide that pathway is not for them?
That is such a great question. Um, we know that students can change your mind. Uh, I know myself, I changed my mind three or four times before I even got in my sophomore year of college. So we all are, we all have experienced changing our mind. It's super easy because it's not tied to an actual credit in their schedule. So let's say, I'm going to go back again to Allison being the healthcare career pathway student, for example. Let's say she's really into that and she wakes up one day, she's like, you know what? I really love working with people, I think I'm leaning more towards education. And I would say, well, that's, you're in the right spot, we know you're going for education. And so what we can do is work with her community of support, being the school counselor or anyone else, and we can just literally pull her up on Skyward and change it to education. Um, and so it's really fluid. If you're a new student and you enter March of this year, a student can identify any time during the year and change accordingly.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Dr. Arcand, did you answer your question?
Yes, it did, thank you, awesome job, by the way, keep it up.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? All right, please continue, Ms. Moore.
Thank you, Chair Mullen. Um, so the other thing that I wanted to mention is that, thank you, Steve, um, that the, the work that we did is just the beginning. That is the first step in the big picture of how it connects to future of learning in the brand-new high school. So in the future, this spring, our goal is to bring a group of people together that have an interest and a passion to be with Career Pathways at the North and South and ALC, um, buildings. And we will talk about how does this implementation relate to the bigger picture a couple of years down the road. And so that's just, that's face, that's what people are seeing right now. But it is absolutely worth noting that there are so many exciting things happening, and I'm just hoping to sprinkle some positivity in all of your board meeting this evening. Um, so the very thing, top thing there, and I actually see my girl B in the room. She is one of our mentor interns, um, for the Anchor Program. So back in the summer, we received a grant. Um, B and seven other paid interns are creating a middle school mentor program. They called it the Anchor Program for middle school students to help them weather the storm, to study the waves of the storm. I'm sorry, B, if I got the theme, the taglang wrong. But we also have added a mental health first aid certification. Um, Katie Marsh is one of our South Campus teachers, she is a nationally certified mental health first aid cert- certificate or instructor, and we will be able to offer that certification to eighteen-year-olds, um, hopefully as soon as the spring. We also, if you didn't know, um, are one of the stops for the Autonomous Vehicle Project. The city of White Bear Lake, uh, was actually chosen as a pilot project with MinDOT and the city of White Bear Lake and many other intermediaries to, um, actually have this piloted autonomous vehicle. And South Campus is at the stop, we are one of the stops. And so our very own automotive career pathway students will be able to work on this autonomous vehicle or with the autonomous vehicle throughout the next entire school year. And we were the only school chosen across the state of Minnesota for the Center of Transportation Studies to offer a Cav Camp, which is a certified autonomous vehicle camp for students who would like to, um, pursue a career in autonomous vehicles, robotics, engineering, all those really cool techy things. We are having summer internships, which I'm really excited about, we are moving forward with all of those. Chair Mullen knows about this next one, the driver's permit. Um, for those of you who don't know, in Career Pathways and at the district, we really are trying to focus on ensuring that our students are college and career-ready. And our, Dan Rossiter, one of our construction career pathway teachers, is like a genius, because he came to Chair Mullen and I and a few others, and he said, I got this idea, I really think we should pursue it. And so we know any person who wants to go into the skilled trades has to have a driver's license. And if you do not have a driver's license, you're not career-ready, no matter what. You can be eighteen and have your high school diploma, but if you don't have your driver's permit, you cannot take that next step. So we are now working to pilot a potential program for next year where Dan Rossiter could potentially become the, uh, certified driving instructor for our construction career pathway students. Um, and so more details to come, but know that we've already started working with A-plus Driving School and Tim Maurer and the team just discussed how we can actually work to serve our students to really think about being truly college and career-ready. Um, the other things, just fun things to note would be that we received a Minnesota Department of Education grant as we speak. Our environmental club at South Campus is revitalizing the Peace Garden that has been, uh, vacant for years. And we are creating a water-sustainable learning lab, classroom-outdoor lab for our teachers and our students, all because of this Race to Reduce grant that we received and our Water Warriors team for H2O for Life. So it's going to be fabulous, I can't wait for you guys to have an outdoor board meeting this summer there. Um, our Friday virtual visits are a hit, and you are welcome to come. Any high school students is welcome to join us. Every Friday, we have five virtual visits for college and career, including union training centers and any other employer that has registered apprenticeships. We have had so many students attend these fall virtual visits that we, by demand and request, actually are launching a spring series, starting the first Friday of February. So again, it's a way to be innovative and also a way to adapt to these, these distance-learning times. The last two things, just to help you all feel good about the really exciting things happening in this world would be that manufacturing career pathway received a Gene Haas grant, we will be purchasing and providing toolkits for any student who per, uh, pursues a cu- career and a degree in a two-year manufacturing degree, like CNC machining, um, anything like that kind of in that area. Um, so toolkits for those students. And finally, for those that don't know, um, Wilbur Plastic Services is a manufacturing company in White Bear Lake. If you've ever had an MRI, you can thank them because they manufacture MRIs pretty much like internationally, really. And so they called us up in the fall and they were like, oh my gosh, we're having such problems with trying to fill our positions, we don't know what to do. And so we worked together and we created a high school position for manufacturing and engineering students. Anyone who was sixteen or older, Monday through Thursday, Thursday, three to eight PM, sixteen bucks an hour starting, they could go work as an assembler and they could get on the job skills training because these students want to pursue manufacturing and engineering. And to date, they have hired over sixteen students, we have filled an entire assembling department, which is phenomenal, and I get to go visit them tomorrow, all masked up. So this story, that last story is being, um, shared and, uh, that story is being shared at their international headquarters in North Carolina. So I guess the, the moral of the story is we have lots of really great things happening and just know that while I may not be seeing students in person every day, students like B in this room and others are, are still actively pursuing a career outside of their school day. So if you have questions, the last slide, Steve, is, um, our contact information, and if all else fails, you can go straight to our website.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, I really appreciate it and appreciate the update. I'm going to tell you, thank you for your work, uh, you're doing a great job and, and I'm hearing it not only from, uh, some of the staff members I've been talking to, but from the students, they really enjoy having you there, so really appreciate your work. Uh, Ms. Thompson has a question, so I'll turn it over to her to ask her a question.
Uh, it's more of just a comment on the fabulous work, this is just fantastic and, um, as somebody who went through a Career Pathways program in school and is still working in the same field that I was, uh, given the opportunity to learn in high school, this is, it really just, this is good stuff. This is positive, uh, a boost, a positive boost to my Monday and start of the week, so thank you for all this work. It's just absolutely fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Team effort, that's for sure.
Ms. Ellison?
I wanted to echo what Ms. Thompson said and say that just today, the governor, uh, released his Due North Education Plan and it specifically called out education, career, and technical pathways. And I saw that and I was so proud to be from a district that had not only the foresight to start this, but also the follow-through. So I'm, I'm really thrilled for our students that they have all these opportunities and I'm particularly excited about the education pathway, so thank you so much for your work.
Yes, you bet, we are so excited too. And if there's, if you ever have any ideas, I know that all of you have good ideas too, you're welcome to send them my way and we can see, we can see what happens.
Thank you, anybody else? All right. Thank you all very much again for your work and really appreciate everything you do. Uh, Dr. Gillespie, I'll turn it over to you if there's any last words.
Well, just want to say thank you and thank you to Jenny and her team. They, they have continued to work really hard in some really difficult times and it is definitely fun to hear all the different stuff that they've done with our kids and with each other and continue moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I add one thing?
Yeah, sure, Dr. Kazmercheck.
So I know Jenny mentioned it, um, but I want to, I want to mention it again. So the, the high school project, a lot going around Career Pathways has gone into the, the design of that building. So we truly are building something that's going to be impactful for generations of students to come, largely because of this.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmercheck. Um, is there, is anybody else have anything else? Okay, uh, we will move, now move into our next discussion item, uh, B2, which is the overview of the fiscal year twenty-one, uh, budget, revised budget and fiscal twenty-two projected budget. Uh, Mr. Wall?
Now, thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kazmercheck. With me tonight is our, uh, Director of Finance, Andy Johnson. And so we have some information to share as we, uh, as we move forward, uh, uh, for February when we bring our revised budget for FY twenty-one to the board. So I was moving to the next slide. This is a graphic that you've seen many times, but just a reminder that the budget that we've been functioning with for FY twenty-one was the preliminary budget approved in June. At that time, we're, uh, bringing to you a budget full of assumptions because, uh, we're, um, we're making educated guesses on what our enrollment's going to look like, what state funding is going to look like. And so that preliminary budget in June, we, we call it the preliminary budget because we know that it's a work in progress. Throughout the fall, summer and fall, our finance department works with our auditors, looking at the prior year budget and bringing closure to that. We also work on getting the, uh, tax levy proposal ready for the board and we ask you to approve that in December at the Truth in Taxation hearing. Normally, the audit comes to you in November or December, but this year, because of the CARES Act and the requirement for federal, um, for a federal audit and the delay in the guidance for that audit, you heard the audit, saw the audit report in January this year. Um, and then we come to you at the January work session each year with recommendations for budget adjustments. And that's, uh, as that budget was originally built on assumptions, now in January, we have the prior year audit and we have a good handle on enrollment for this year, and so we bring an adjusted budget to you. And in February, we'll ask you to approve that adjusted budget and we'll, uh, look forward to a preliminary, uh, work for that budget that you'll be asked to approve in June for fiscal year twenty-two. So that's the process that we use each year. Key to our, um, key to our budgeting process, I, I talked about the audit and at the audit discussion we had in, at our last meeting, you heard that there are some challenging, challenges with that audit. We're really starting, bringing this adjusted budget to you, um, with some challenges. And as we look forward to next year, um, and the impact of enrollment on our budget, the COVID impacted enrollment, we see we have some challenging years ahead of us. Uh, right now, our Senate, uh, K-12 finance analysts are suggesting that it could be until twenty-twenty-five until enrollment across the state of Minnesota and public schools, it's back to the pre-pandemic level. We think that we're going to be a little ahead of that because we are in a school district that has construction occurring and, you know, single-family home construction is continuing on the north end of our district. And so we're more optimistic than, uh, than what might play itself out in, at the state level. But, uh, Andy Johnson is going to walk through our enrollment projections and what happened, uh, this year and what we're expecting now as we move forward and then through our budget adjustments. So Andy, if you're ready, I'll turn it over to you.
Sounds good, good evening, everybody. Um, so what you have here on the screen is a history of our enrollment over the last several years, what we were projected for this year, where we're actually expecting to end up, and then what we think is going to happen down the road. So you can see if we look at the actual fiscal, um, twenty-twenty, that's the nineteen-twenty school year. We ended, um, the school year last year at eight thousand seven hundred and six students. Um, for this current school year, fiscal twenty-one, we were projecting eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-one students. That was pre-COVID. Um, as Tim said, school districts across the state have experienced, um, drastic decreases in their enrollment this year. And we're actually projecting to end up this school year with eight thousand four hundred and fifty-seven students. So that's two hundred and, just shy of two hundred and fifty students less than last year and three hundred and twenty-five students less than where we were projecting to be for this year. So as you know, um, pretty much all of our funding is driven on enrollment. And so as we have decreases in enrollment, we're also going to see corresponding decreases in revenue. And that's really, um, the basis for the, for the conversation that we're going to be having this evening is our enrollment is down and so we're going to have to do something about that because, um, money doesn't grow in trees, unfortunately, so we have to address it. So with that decrease in, um, students, the three hundred and twenty-four students that we were expecting and actually didn't show up, we do think that some of them are going to be coming back. Now, nobody knows, right? We're in uncharted territory, so we don't know how many will be coming back and when they'll be coming back. Um, we have done some research on where they're going and so we kind of have an idea of where some of them are. Um, so we're projecting a small increase for next year and some of that is attributed to, um, those students that didn't show up, thinking some of them very likely will be coming back. Um, hopefully, we're in a different place with COVID. Um, and then we also knew that there are, um, some kindergarten students that we were expecting this year and their families told us that they were going to hold them back one more year. So the enrollments built for fiscal twenty-two do factor in, um, kindergarten enrollment based on the births that happen in our area as well as some of those students that we knew were being held back, so there's some, um, addition there. And then there is a factor as well for an increase in those students that, um, chose to sit this one out, who are either going to pu- public or private schools or doing homeschool or whatever that might be. So for next school year, fiscal twenty-two, we're projecting eight thousand five hundred and ninety-five. And then you can see going out for the next couple of years, um, what we're projecting for enrollment. So Steve, if you'd go to the next slide? So I know this is probably kind of small on your screen as it is for mine, um, so I apologize for that. Unfortunately, that's usually how our spreadsheets go. Um, but what we did is we started our pre, our, uh, budget assumptions based on enrollment first. So we put together five different years of, uh, budget, uh, projection. So at the top, we have all the different assumptions, we have our ADMs in each of the next, um, five years, or the current year plus four years. And then we have the different, uh, assumptions that we've made for the, the revenues and expenses. So our referendum revenue, for example, we know that there's an inflationary factor in that and we know that that was one point eight five percent this year, two point three one percent next year. And we're projecting one point eight five percent increases for the next three years. The stated formula increased, so we know that we had two percent in this current year. Um, based on the state of the budget, the state's budget, we are not predicting an increase next year and that's going to be difficult for us if that comes true. Um, after that, we're projecting a one and a half percent increase on our, on our state, um, aid revenue. Our special ed revenue, that's all, that's based on our expenses, so as our expenses are increasing, so will our, um, special ed revenue. There used to be a cap on that and that cap is removed, which is very beneficial for us. In the current year's budget, the fiscal twenty-one budget, our, uh, special ed revenue is calculated based on our current expenses. And then going forward, we're predicting a two percent increase on that revenue each year. Uh, we're very fortunate this school year to receive some one-time federal revenue. So, um, as our enrollment, uh, was down drastically from what we were budgeting, we, uh, received five point seven million dollars, or we're anticipating five point seven million dollars this year in one-time federal revenue. Um, about half of that, we have new spending. Um, so, you know, needs that we've had in our district this school year directly related to COVID, whether that's, um, HVAC needs, different, um, sanitation, disinfecting supplies, um, some professional development for, for our staff to, uh, make sure that they're, they have what they need to be able to teach in the distance learning and the different hybrid. Um, so half of that federal money, we had new spending, that was actually new expenses, and then about half of it we're using to actually offset our existing staff. So, um, that's all factored into the fiscal twenty-one budget. Um, I will say as well that about half of that is, uh, the new money that we know is coming at some point, the ESER II is, is what it's called at the federal level. Um, but we don't have a lot of guidance, that's the new stimulus that was recently passed. And so we haven't received a whole lot of guidance from the federal government or the state, um, about when that's coming, exactly what amount we're going to be getting, it's just so new. Um, but I wanted to let you know that it's factored into the budget, so that may change a little bit. Um, salaries and benefits, so we know where, where those, uh, budgets should be for this year, just based on, um, settled contracts. And then we know that we're going to be up for negotiations, we have factored in a two and a half percent increase to the budget in each year, um, just- We have factored in a two and a half percent increase to the budget in each year, assuming that's where we might end up after negotiations. And then non-salaries increases, that would be all of our discretionary spending, so supply-type purchases, contracted services. We have a flat funding or flat budgeted for next school year. And then after that, we have a two and a half percent increase in fiscal 23, and then a 2% in fiscal 24 and fiscal 25. So based on all of those assumptions up above, we put together some projections to calculate where we think our revenues and our expenses are going to come up. So in fiscal 21, you can see that we have projected revenues in our revised budget of And then we have projected expenses of 123,381,000. So for this school year, we're projecting an increase in fund balance, a slight increase of $159,000. We use all of those assumptions to build out the budget for the next four years as well. So in fiscal 22, for example, we have projected revenues of 122,660,000 and projected expenditures of 128,942. So you can tell that that means that we're going to be deficit spending for next school year. So in total, we have a deficit for next school year of 6.8 million. You can see there, you've got the projected budget adjustments of $4 million, and then a projected decrease in fund balance of 2.8. Add those two together, and that gets us to our net deficit for next year. In each of the following years, we're also projecting a deficit. And really, the reason for that is, as you know, we're a people-heavy business. And so as salaries increase, if we we don't have a corresponding state aid increase to offset that, we're going to end up deficit spending. So, you know, hopeful that there that the state comes through, and perhaps there's some legislation that might pay us on our old ADMs, for example, and maybe they'll come through, and we'll get additional state aid. But if that doesn't happen, then we're going to be deficit spending, and we need to address that. So you can see going forward to the right, you can see where each of the next few years, where we're going to be ending up without me reading each of the revenue and expenditure amounts. But we do have some projected budget adjustments that we are bringing forward to you as a proposal. So no specifics for a proposal, but just targets, based on our unassigned fund balance as a percent of our total expenses. So as you know, our policy 714 designates our target fund balance, and that target fund balance is actually right now at 12.5% to 16.7%. And so what we do to calculate that is we look at our unassigned fund balance. So kind of right in the middle of the page there, you have our unassigned fund balance. At the end of last school year, we ended our we ended the year at 7,228,000. And then we have several different kind of pots of of fund balance in our general fund that we have discretion in how we use them. The honest the assigned fund balance is currently restricted. It was restricted intending to kind of be a gap for when we went to self-insured health insurance. And the idea was that if we had a bad year, that $2 million could kind of help us weather that storm. But the intent was then that down the road, we'd essentially pay ourselves back with an increase in in premium cost for health insurance. We have restricted for medical assistance, so we're able to do some third-party billing for some of the services that our special ed folks and health folks are that they perform for some of our students. And so we have a fund balance of $730,000 for last year. And then operating capital, there's a lot of different ways that we can use our operating capital. And so we currently have a fund balance of about $3 million that we can that all goes into the into the general fund, and we can use some of that to help with some of our general fund expenses. So in total, last year, we had $13,024,629 in fund balance. And so to to get to that percentage, that that policy targets, you take our unassigned fund balance, the 7,228, and divide that by our total expenses to get to our percentage. So last year, we were at 6.2%. So going forward, we took our revenues and expenses and show how that will be reflected then in our fund balance, so how our net deficit or our net increase this year is impacted by operations. So for this year, we expect our fund balance, our unassigned fund balance, to go up to 7,387. And then we expect the rest of our set-asides to be to be stable, so assigned restricted for medical assistance and operating capital being the same. So total fund balance would go up by 159,192, which would put us at 6% fund balance. So our unassigned fund balance was pretty stable, but our expenses are going up, so as a percentage, that actually decreases by a little bit. And when we were looking at our projected budget adjustment targets, we really wanted to kind of have a focus of what our unassigned fund balance was as a percent of total expenses. And so we knew that for next school year, if we did a $4 million budget adjustment, that would bring our unassigned fund balance to sort of if we were to do a $4 million budget adjustment and then do a kind of a shift in assigned restricted for medical assistance and operating capital to help with the general fund, that would bring us to a 5.8% fund balance for next school year. So going forward, we thought it was important that we try to show a growth in that unassigned fund balance, so that we are working our way towards towards that fund balance target of 12.5%. We also thought, you know, we're looking at a 6.8% or 6.8 million deficit next year, but there's a lot of unknown. We don't know exactly what's going to happen with enrollment next year. We don't know what's going to happen with legislation, because there's been a lot of talk. And so we really felt that it was important that we don't try to target that full 6.8 million next year, and that we take a kind of a stepped approach. So we're bringing forward a target of 4 million for next year, currently 2.6 million for the following, and 500,000 the next, and 750 for fiscal 25. So then down below, at the very bottom, I show what the fund balance target would be if we were at our actual policy. So if we were at 12.5% unassigned fund balance for this current school year, we would be at 15,422,000. So you can see that we're short from that target of by $8 million for this year, and you can follow across and see where that is. So a lot of numbers that I'm throwing at you, I know, and I apologize, that's the nature of accounting. But, you know, welcome to any questions that you might have or comments.
Questions or comments for Ms. Johnson? I know there's a lot of information coming, and I'm I'm sure as board members start to digest all of the the numbers, there's going to be questions that are going to come your way. So I know that they can email Mr. Wald, unless there's anything. Ms. Bloyd.
So as we start making these decisions for the the deficit that we're going to have to cover, will the administration let the board know what those are ahead of time?
Yeah, I think we will review with the Finance Committee again.
Okay.
As we reviewed this with the Finance Committee, the board's Finance Committee last week, and we will again, as we move forward with identifying those adjustments. And then we'd expect to bring them to the board at the end of the February work session, that we'd have some information for you at that point. It'll be.
You don't think you'll have everything figured out by the February meeting, though?
Well, I think that really by the March work session is where we'll probably have a little more detail. But we should have some, if I can use the word buckets, kind of where we expect where we expect we're targeting some of that 4 million.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bloyd. Dr. Newmaster, I saw that you had your hand up.
Right, the little computer hand as well as mine. The question I have is, without a crystal ball and with making big guesses, I was listening to Governor Walsh's chat all afternoon, and some of the things that they listed that looked positive, as if they may provide funding based on your 2019 enrollment, rather than this year is just kind of a wash for everybody. I mean, it's it's a hard year. So I he pronounced it as if it was fact. So I'm not sure if that's the case or it's hoped for. But how would that impact if that positive goes through?
If fiscal 21, if we were paid based on our fiscal 20 ADMs, which is actually virtually the same as our fiscal 19, ironically, we had really stable enrollment in those two years. So if we were paid on that instead of where we're actually projecting for this school year, it would generate an additional $1.3 million for this year. And that's part of why we said we don't feel like it's prudent to tackle the full 8.6 or 6.8, sorry, million this year, just because there is legislation out there, and we just don't know.
All right. Thank you. Did that answer your question, Dr. Newmaster?
As well as it can, and I'm hoping for a nice extra bump in the CARES funds to cover some of our uncovered expenses over the last year, as it was an expensive school year to provide awesome services.
As as we all are.
Yeah.
And to be down to 325 students and not really be able to adjust your staffing to match that, that's part of the significant challenge was, we were staffed for those 325. But given the COVID situation and the dynamic that we've been serving students in, we really couldn't make that adjustment in the fall. So we've been running a more expensive model this year than our enrollment allows.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, Ms. Johnson, I'm just curious what our salary, amount of salary is currently. I realize it's the biggest by far share of our budget, but just wondering how what our salary figure stands at at this point?
So total salaries and benefits is right around $100 million. So, yeah, significant.
Right, okay, thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
I don't have a question, but I just a comment about a good reminder for all of us school board members to contact our legislators and let them know, you know, where our needs are. They need to hear from us. They need to hear from us as citizens, but as school board members, I think it's even more important that we remember to reach out to them because they need to hear from us, so that hopefully they'll help as much as they can anyways.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Ms. Ellison?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Thompson, for bringing that up. And I think it's important to note that two of our local senators serve on the Education Committee in the Senate, Senator Chamberlain and Senator Uyghur. So I think that's a great reminder. And just a huge thank you to Ms. Johnson and Mr. Wald and your whole team. This is a hard year with all of these numbers, and I really appreciate the work that you've done.
Thank you. Dr. Arcan?
Yeah, and thank you, sir. The other thing I want to say is, when I was watching the press conference today, I believe the the Do North Plan is great, but I think we have to wait to see what the budget comes out tomorrow. And then we have to watch it move through the legislative process, and that's where we will have to contact our legislators to support some of this. And I know that one of those priorities is a one-time investment to ensure for the loss of negative, so loss of students. And so I was just curious to think, too, when will we actually see that payment if it has to go through the entire process, if we actually get something?
Thank you, Dr. Arcan. Ms. Bloyd?
Yeah, just kind of a general question, Mr. Wald. Private schools also receive funding through the CARES Act, correct?
Uh, yeah, they they've had some, yeah.
So do they does the CARES Act differentiate between public and and private education and how much each school is allotted?
Well, in the first allotment, in the first original CARES Act, we were the fiscal agent for that. And so our our private schools could get an allotment based on their, what's the word I'm looking for here, Andy? Yeah, essentially, their Title I participation. So then their Title I participation is not a very big number. And for some of them, they don't they don't participate in Title I at all. In the in the original CARES Act, they submitted receipts to us, and we submitted for the reimbursement. Now, the second round, I believe there is money for private schools in there again, but we don't have the details on how that will work yet. We're assuming it'll be probably a similar process.
So there'd have to be some sort of reason for them to receive it, like Title I?
Yeah, that's what it was based on the last time. So, you know, and some of our schools participate in Title I programming, and they keep track of students who qualify for Title I services, free and reduced lunch. And so, you know, they they have good records to do that, and others just don't bother with it. And, you know, in that case, they wouldn't have gotten anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bloyd. Other questions, comments? Ms. Johnson, did you have anything that you'd like to close with? Mr. Wald?
No.
No, thank you.
All right. Appreciate all the information. I know there's some more information coming our direction, and appreciate that. With that, we move to our next agenda, our next discussion item, which is B3, which is the learning model update. Is this Dr. Gillespie or Ms. This is Dr. Kazburecik. Thank you.
I'll take this one, and then we may have a team effort depending on questions here. So thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. So I wanted to provide a brief update tonight. First of all, elementary. So our students in grades K through 2 return to school on January 19th, and then students in grades 3 through 5 will return on February 1st. And the Elementary Distance Learning Academy has over 600 students enrolled, and that seems to be going well as we've gotten that rolling. Reports from principals have been very positive. The staff and students are very excited to be back at school. One challenge is student drop-off and pickup due to the increased number of vehicles in the parking lots. So we continue to urge patience during these times of the day. And then with secondary, so we've had extensive conversations at the secondary level as we hope to bring students back to school. Principals continue to work with teacher leaders to discuss what our next move might be. We continue to identify additional students who need support, such as students who are not advancing in their learning or who may be in danger of not passing. We will remain in distance learning at the secondary level for now, and will continue to monitor county case rates and other local data, as well as continue to communicate regularly with public health officials. So the 14-day county case rate, which you're all familiar with, continues to be an important consideration at the secondary level. So White Bear Lake's calculated blended rate, so that's the combined rate of the three school districts, counties, is in the mid-40s as of the latest data released by the Department of Health, which is an increase compared to the previous week's data. So we are not likely to consider a change to our secondary learning model until we are under the threshold of 30. Once we're under the threshold of 30, we would pivot to a structure of having our staff back in school buildings to deliver in a model that would be improved compared to the learning model we began the school year in. And even when the district begins offering a learning model other than distance learning, families will continue to be given the opportunity to keep their child learning from home. And then just a couple other things I wanted to update you on. So the vaccination of teachers and other school staff has begun. Last week, White Bear Lake was allotted 20 slots. And then we learned today that we have slots for 438 of our employees to be given the opportunity to be vaccinated this week. So we don't know what the allocation will be from week to week, but that so that was just announced, actually, this earlier this afternoon. So and just to note, when filling vaccination opportunity slots, we follow guidance from the state to prioritize based on those working in person with students. we follow guidance from uh the state to prioritize based on those working in person with students, age, serious underlying health conditions, and racial and ethnic minority groups. So that's my updates, and uh we're happy to take questions if you have any. But so the big question right now is um, you know, secondary, what are we planning with secondary? And the, a- as of right now, as I said, um we're planning to stay where we're at and then continue to monitor the, the case rates, and then uh hopefully we can make a different decision at some point.
All right. Uh, Dr. Arcan, I saw that your hand was up.
Um I first want to start by thanking uh Dr. Kazpachek and all the administrators that are talking about how we bring it back. I know that the public kind of wants concrete answers about ex, an exact date. And then I know that's tough because we can give them a date today, and if the rates don't change or the rates go up, we have to change it. So I think that the transparency here is we're looking at the, the rates, and when then when we can see that decline, we can make that judgment that is safe. Uh the thing I want to say is it's it, you know, I keep hearing it's safe for our kids, safe for our kids, but I, you know, we have to also think about the staff members who are there. Having somebody who's had COVID and has continual issues with some of the side effects or some of the causes of COVID that uh that can linger, this is not something that we want to play around with. I didn't, I would not wish this on any of our staff in our buildings to have this because for me, it was kind of a nightmare. So I think it's important that we let the public know that we are continually looking at it. We are evaluating the um numbers. We're very open with the numbers, and as the numbers come down, we will make that decision to move forward. And, and that's where it is. And unfortunately, this is not something we can put a hard date on and say this is the date we're moving because we just don't know what the science and the data is going to show us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Arcan. Um, Ms. Beloit?
Yeah, I kind of wanted to, to echo with what uh Mr. Arcan said as, you know, my son just got over having it. Um and even though he had, you know, really mild symptoms, he's still having things occur with him. He's short of breath. He started basketball, and running up and down the court has been really, really difficult for him, trying to catch his breath. And I mean, that's, this is a kid that's normally really, really in shape. So I, e- everyone thinks, oh, well, you know, this, it doesn't affect kids as much. That's true, but it does affect them. And just because they can make it through doesn't mean that it isn't going to affect other areas of their life. And I think people need to be really careful when they throw out these things, when they say that, you know, it doesn't really affect kids that much. It's mainly adults. So there's, there's a lot to, there's a lot that isn't known yet. And there's a lot of things that Scott said that continue on after you no longer, you know, can pass it along to anybody else. You still have lingering effects.
Thank you, Ms. Beloit. Uh, did you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, Dr. Kazpachek, um wondering in terms of those vaccinations that we've been uh getting, are they the Pfizer ones or are they the mod, let's see, Moderna or whatever the other name is? Uh the reason I ask is there's uh I believe a, a different time period between the two uh from when the first vaccination is given in the second vaccination. I think one is two weeks and one is a month, if I remember right. And I'm just curious which uh, which manufacturer, uh manufactured the uh vaccines that we're getting.
Um Molly, do you, are you on still? Molly, do you know?
I am. Yeah, I can take this one. Uh the pilot programs um that our staff are getting the vaccine through, they are being offered the Pfizer vaccine. Um and that is twenty-one days between your first and second dose. The Moderna is twenty-eight days between doses.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And we expect that most of these, the, the four hundred thirty-eight that we learned about today are going to be Moderna.
Is that? Yeah, I'd, I'd have to verify that, Tim. I, I, I shared that, and I, I would need to make a hundred percent sure of that. Now I'm, now I'm wondering, so.
Dr. Kazpachek, if you, when you get that information, if you could pass it out to the board, I think that everybody would like to have that information. Um next is Ms. Thompson.
Um, yeah, I, two things, I guess. One, I wanted to echo off of uh Dr. Arcan and uh Ms. Beloit's comments about um, you know, the after effects of COVID. I have uh, my daughter had it. Thankfully, uh she's doing well now. Um but my brother's family had it, and my brother is younger than me. We won't say how old I exactly am, but he's younger than me by a couple of years. And he has actually gone in, he has scarring on his lungs due to catching COVID. So he's right now in some therapy for, I believe, the next eight weeks. And then he's also had uh have to go in and have some testing on his heart. And prior to this, he hasn't had any um significant health issues. So it is definitely something that we want to uh proceed with caution because we do have adults in our building and children. You know, I would hate to be the less than one percent who has a child who is severely affected by this. I, I don't think that um it's worth it. I do, um, I guess maybe I have two questions. One, I was curious about the testing that we are making available. Is it um, is it the antigen testing? Or are we using the RNA PCR testing for our staffing? Maybe this is one from Ms. Miller.
Yep, I can take this one again. Um our testing that we're providing is the saliva test through Vault Health. Um it's the same one that's provided from the uh Department of Health to anyone who lives in Minnesota um for free, and it is a PCR test.
Great. That's helpful. Um from what I hear, that's the better one, that has more accurate results um in it. And then I guess another question would be uh as we hopefully will watch the numbers start to go back down again, which we all hope and want, and the vaccines start to roll out. Um I know we can't give positive deadlines of when we will start considering bringing our other students back into buildings. Um if it's something that we have to do on a level like we're doing with elementary, where we can only introduce so many grades at a time, um I guess my curiosity would be if we would make sure that one of the precedences would be for me anyways. Um even if I didn't have a senior, because I don't think my senior will come back. I, she's kind of stuck herself in the distance learning plan for the rest of the year. But I know that other seniors and families feel it is very important to get their kids back in the school. You know, it's a big year for them. It's a big year for everybody. But would it be something we could possibly consider um that we prioritize our senior students i- in the high school level anyways of getting them back into the buildings? Um and then as far as like graduation is going, how are we feeling about our graduation rates? I believe I'd asked this before, and I'm just wondering if we have any um anything, an update on it. Do we feel that we're losing students now? Um kind of where are we at? Is there anybody who maybe has a little, can give us a little update on that?
Yeah, Dr. Gillespie, could you speak a little bit to the seniors? And I know, I know that we've seniors or, you know, any of those, seniors is a big year, obviously. Sixth grade transition, ninth grade transition, those are all big years, and those are all, those have all been conversations about how do we, how do we get students in um who um you know, a- at a minimum at these, at these different levels to, to make sure they're successful this year. So those conversations have happened, and I, I'll answer one more of your questions and then ask Dr. Gillespie to add more, more uh context around the senior question. So um grade bands are, you're limited to three grade, okay, three grade bands at a time to bring them in um under the new guidance uh from uh elementary, and that also applies to secondary. In our case, we have six, seven, eight middle schools, so we could bring a middle school back under that guidance. And because our high school is split, we could bring ninth and tenth back and eleventh and twelfth back. So we wouldn't have the, the issue of being limited to three um grades at the high school. So and Dr. Gillespie, I don't know if you could add?
Yeah, we have um, as our principals work with their teacher leaders, they have talked and continue to talk about ways to um make sure that we're providing supports for students and all of us remain focused on our senior class as we do those other grade levels as well. But know that this has been a, a challenging year, and we all know that senior year is special for our students. Um in terms of graduation rates and, and losing students, I, I haven't heard any data around that, and I could get it for you, Ms. Thompson. But in terms of concerns around grades, um we are concerned about our grades. We haven't had a final grading reporting um yet. It's hard to believe this school year. We still haven't finished first semester, and so this Friday is the last day for first semester. And then we actually have extended the grading reporting for teachers to allow um for time for our educators and principals and counselors. They've really been working really hard to make sure that we have as many um students passing and earning credit as possible and that um the data around grading really for our middle school students is, is, has been similar to years past, but we have seen an increase in no grades and incompletes because we're not using the F grade this year. Um and so our principal, principals, counselors, educators, they've really been working this whole semester to try to make sure that we're supporting students and including bringing um students on campus in as much as they could, um and continue to look at ways of doing that within the current safety guidelines and, and really looking at kids who continue um to struggle with their classes. And so um I will be able to pull that data. It won't be until about mid-February until we have that first reporting. And then we will absolutely continue focusing on our seniors and making sure that um as we have since last year, that COVID doesn't impact their ability to graduate on time. But I would suspect that the, there will be an increase um compared to previous years, but we've been doing a lot of work prior to this and continue to have it be a focus for us. So we'll continue to support our students and, and leaders and our educators. And we've really received a lot of positive um support and stories from families and, and thanking our families and um educators for working with our students. So I feel good about the work we're doing, but this has been a really difficult time for sure.
Great. Thank you. And I, and I completely agree. I mean, I, uh just from my own experience, it's a difficult year, and I, I know all the work that goes on that you guys are doing, and I am uh thankful for it. And um I just want to, you know, our community needs to know that our teachers are, they are working hard. They are in this, the same as all of us are, I think, actually a little bit on a different level in some aspects because there is a lot that they have to deal with. And um I will not allow anyone to put our teachers down. They are fantastic. And, and we appreciate, I, I appreciate all of you and all of our staff. So thank you for everything you guys are doing. And hopefully, when we get those numbers in February, they're, they're better than we, they're better. They're.
And we'll, we'll, we'll work together. Yep.
On the nation of uh if our, if the case rates can trend back downward and if we can continue this, with these rounds of vaccinations, I, I think there's reason to be optimistic. But I, again, I, I think it's probably not, not wise at this point to share specific dates, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think they get us in trouble.
I think it's worth mentioning too that grading is something that nationally, there's been a lot of conversations around and, and things that districts have struggled with. And so um I'm really proud of the work that our educators and principals have been doing, and I know they're committed to our students, and we're not, we won't stop until we figure it out. But it is definitely a partnership, so.
Thank you, Dr. Gillespie.
Just add real quick, let's all remember to be kind to each other, right? That's how we survive this. We are a community.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Beloit?
I'm good. My, my question was already answered previously, so I withdraw. Thank you.
Dr. Newmaster?
And I would second, third, or fourth all the kudos to all the people juggling this very complex learning model discussion with all the different K twelve and early childhood variabilities. And I guess from having spent thirty-plus years in secondary, I have some understanding of how complicated it is. And, and I'm just wondering, as you are looking at this, I'm sure you've thought about it. We don't know what's going to happen. I won't begin to guess what's going to happen. But if we're looking at going back in secondary and in a forum, are you looking at for second semester the way the, the classes have been broken up first semester? Where you have one, two, three, and then you have four, five, six? I'm, I'm just wondering because that, that's so complicated. Second semester would be the time to make your adjustment, obviously, if you think there's going to be a change.
It is complicated, and our principals and educators and um worked and talked about that. Um a lot, they solicited feedback from students and um, and I believe they also talked with families. Um we did some various surveys, but really principals have worked with their leadership teams. And um as we know, there is definitely pros and cons to every single schedule model that we've done. They really feel like the pros of the schedule in terms of students navigating three classes, teachers navigating three classes at a time outweigh um any sort of pro in terms of changing it at this point, especially with not knowing when we would look at um any sort of enhancements or changes to a learning model. And so the schedule will main, will remain the same. And so that was just recently communicated with um teachers and educators and, and families as we move forward. And so really, principals have been working really close with their educators and teacher leaders around how to navigate that. But it is complicated, but something that has helped really alleviate things. You definitely, as we'll get feedback where it hasn't been perfect for everyone, but even when we engage in some of the conversations, it's hard to find a, a schedule that would really meet every single need in terms of balancing. So the pros outweighed the cons on that schedule.
Okay, I just wondered because it's one thing to do it online, and then you know when you're the model, if you were to go back to in-person students, some of us remember the four-period day and how long an hour that was. Um so hopefully, people that taught under that have got some good tips because that was a very interesting model to teach under.
Yeah, we've had, definitely we have people who've given insight around that and will.
It's long.
Provide support.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Mr. Chapman?
Dr. Gillespie, um could you remind me again, uh this is keying off something that you had said earlier where uh we are not using, you know, the fail, the F uh in terms of the grading. Could you uh explain to me or just remind me again what happens with, with I's? Um I mean, do they not convert at some point to an F or, or a fail grade? Or, or I can't recall. So if you could help me uh remember, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, so the I means that the learning is incomplete. And so we've, we've been on a journey of looking at equitable grading practices. And so an F means students have failed, when really it's not that students have failed, it's that we, we have incomplete evidence. And so right now, what's happening is once, when a student receives an I, the, the educator indicates what the student needs to do in order to have evidence to measure what that student knows and is able to do in relation to the standards. And so we're, this is new for us as a system, and so we're navigating that. And so our counselors and administrators are partnering with our educators to find out, okay, what does that mean? Eventually, that would translate into, you know, that educator no longer being responsible for that, and how would our, our structure around summer school change or our structures around credit recovery change? But that I would remain. We wouldn't, we, we wouldn't change that to an F like we've done historically. I'm sure you remember that with your own students. That's, that's been something that was done in the past um as incompletes were used in different circumstances. And so really, as we, this being our first semester, once we have the data and we really look at, okay, how, one, how, how have we done with working on personalized learning plans, looking at no grades, incompletes? We'll then work with our counselors and administrators and talk about, you know, what, what situations are they still able to handle internally? And then what ways do we need to look at our system and examine um supports around credit recovery um and summer school in ways that we haven't before? And so it's another example of ways that our system will change for the better to support students. Um but it is changing in real time as we navigate new situations.
Just following up on that, so what would be i- in a case, for example, where there's pretty clear uh situation where the student just is not doing the work? I mean, refuses whatever. I mean, at some point, uh will, I guess I'm, I'm wondering how that would play out uh in a situation like that where the, where the. in a situation like that where the, where the student is not engaging at all and can't be motivated or anything. I'm, I'm wondering how that would be dealt with.
So those situations are actually the no-grade situations, and then that student would make up the full credit in, in more of the traditional ways that we've done summer school and credit recovery.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Bloyd, did you have a question or are you okay?
Yeah, actually, I did. It's more of a comment because you already addressed the summer school to help students catch up with incompletes. I just wanted to make a comment about the parent-teacher conferences. If first, if we stay in this model where it's just the three classes, three classes, three classes, three classes, I just wanted to make a comment that it made parent-teacher conferences were a little difficult just because they had spent so little time with your students. So we may want to rethink timing on parent-teacher conferences so that then we do actually have those conferences, they've actually been able to spend, you know, a bit of time with our students. I mean, they're always helpful, but you know, some teachers got to spend time in person with the students and some didn't. So it made those, those parent-teacher conferences a little difficult. So it may be something we want to look at as we continue on. If, if we're not back a moral distance, then I guess that kind of, you know, makes it not as much of an issue. But as we come, if we come back, those kinds of things change how those conferences actually feel for a parent. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there for, for some thought.
Okay, yep, we can look into that. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Dr. Gillespie, did you have anything you wanted to close with?
Thank you.
Dr. Kazpachek?
No, thank you all.
Well, that, thank you all for your comments. Thank you all for your work. I really appreciate everything that you're doing. Um, and with that, that was our last agenda item. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chairman Mullin, I move for an adjournment.
And I will second that, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks.
Good night, everyone.